I'm here.
All right, perfect. So everyone should be coming into the meeting muted initially. And when we get to public comment sections and those types of things, we will unmute at that time. But I'm calling this meeting to order. If everyone would please prepare themselves, I know it's unusual in a video meeting before the pledge of allegiance. And we do have a couple of different people that actually have flags or face the nearest flag to you. And we will say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Justice for all. Thank you very much. And if we could have our roll call. And Lori, your sound is off.
Okay, Nola.
I'm here.
Lee.
Yeah.
Renee.
Yeah.
Carrie.
Yeah.
Gerald. Lori here. Jeffrey.
Here. All right, next, we have the agenda. And of course, as everyone knows, this is a very large agenda with a lot on it. And it's unusual moving through something like this online. We are meeting online. I know some people know and some people don't know, but because we were reported to the health department. The last time we had an in-person meeting, they requested that we meet online for a while. And of course, we have issues that we've been discussing and some we haven't, that there can be a lot of conflict and controversy over. But we definitely have a possibility to resolve some of those tonight and move forward on things. And it's important to remember that we can have agreement over one thing and disagreement over another thing. And that that can be okay, because then we're definitely going to have some of that and that will be fine. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any discussion over the agenda? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote. And your sound's off again, Lori. There you go. And your sound went off again. It was on for a moment, then it turned off.
Let's try this again. Carrie.
Yeah.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, we have the approval of past meeting minutes. And because we had working sessions, we do have multiple of these. The first one is for the January 4th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the January 4th 2021 meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
And your sound seems to want to turn off, Lori. I'm not sure why. But it keeps going to mute. I'm certainly not doing it.
Okay. I got Carrie, Lee.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. And the second past meeting minutes are from the January 11th meeting.
Also make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 11th.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Nola.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. Next item is the treasurer's report. Do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's approach, a report.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, paying the bills. Pay the bills.
I motioned to pay the bills.
Do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. And just to clarify, I don't just like doing roll call votes. That is the way it needs to be done when we are having an online meeting of this sort. Next, we have our fire department reports and Chief Stiles, are you ready with that?
Yes, sir, thank you. I've submitted my report. Obviously, you'll see 76 calls for service last month with an average of six minutes and 27 seconds. If you read in your report packet there, you'll see that we have made a decision operationally to remove our Jeep from service as it was a little unworthy, we thought, so we've released that. And the clerk and I'll be removing that from the rest of it as an asset and the insurance on that vehicle. Pleased to say we submitted our grant to the federal assistance for firefighters grant for some rescue tools. I'm not sure what will happen. That can take anywhere from the 12th, when they, the grant application closes to 37 weeks. So I have no idea what round we'll be in if we do are successful. But I'll discuss that more when we have our budget work sessions to explain how that process works. Our turnout gear that we had ordered has been given a ship date, the latest of middle of March, March 12th, to be exact. It would be the latest ship date. But we anticipate that might be a little earlier. Obviously, that's due to COVID restrictions initially that had shut the plant down. The last thing I have, we'd have a little failure of one of our furnaces here in the firehouse due to its age. But I'll bring that up later. Meeting itself, and we'll discuss that at length. And then last, as I'm looking forward to our discussions about the upcoming budget. That's all I have, sir.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Stiles. Next, we have our monthly planning commission report. And are you ready with that, Lee?
Yeah, just one second. Yeah. So planning commission met via Zoom, January 26th. We had two more, two new members part of that meeting as well, Lane Luntzerd and David Nichols. That was due to other terms ending. And those are for, I think those are the one-year terms for to get kind of our two per year schedule going on. Oh, let's see, we heard public comment about the sand mining on the vacant property and automobile road. Part during that, we heard from the owner of the same mining operation Kurt Van Gelder. And along with that, members from the surveying company and the water specialist to answer questions from the commission and the public. Um, we, the commission did end up approving the special land use for the sand mining there. We reviewed another update from the Dog Star Ranch. They're looking into a less expensive route to help with the noise that's going on there. Um, let's see, what did I, let's see. They're looking for that because COVID has impacted their revenue, so they can't really afford the current study recommendations that they have. Um, let's see, the commission approved a draft revision of the sign ordinance. And we're, we will be writing one of those up and looking at that. Um, let's see, then we approved the site plan for the, so the first thing was the, oh, shoot, I can't remember what that was for, but we approved the site plan for the sand mining operation. And then we also reviewed and approved the site plan for the Duck Creek RV park. And then we adjourned.
Excellent, thank you very much, Lee. And next, we do have an annual planning commission report. And are you ready for that, Lorraine?
Yep. This is a report that's required by law. Prior to me, starting in 2017, the planning commission had never received a report like this, but it is required. It's an overview of all the applications received for the previous year. And I also include the zoning enforcement that's done for the year. And we have goals in there. It's, it's nice to look back and see if we met our goals or need to work on them, continue on working, and that's about it.
Excellent, thank you very much. Next, we have our first public comment session. And I'm sure we're going to have a decent amount of public comments, both here and at the second public comment. On your device, you do have the ability to give a hand raise motion, and it shows me a little blue hand. And then I can turn your sound on and we can allow you to speak. If you could keep this session on or this first group of public comment on an agenda item and limit it to three minutes, if you will, I'm sure we'll all appreciate it, but go ahead and give those signals now. If you want to make your hand, perfect, I see some popping up. And go ahead and you can do that while other people are speaking for the hand motion, and then I'll know that there's more coming. But first, I do have Melissa, and let me unmute you. All right.
Good evening.
Yes, go ahead.
So it was brought to my attention, and I think it's on the agenda, but if it's not, please correct me, that the township is considering allowing people to stay on property without utilities in their name or without having any, an address or anything like that. And I just want to, to forewarn you, I've been dealing for years, for about seven or eight years with a neighbor who does allow that. The previous administration was working. I think Lorraine is familiar with Robert Semelbauer and all of the problems that he has caused us over the, over the years. There's definitely a concern with drug trafficking. There are people staying out there, but I guess I would ask you guys to, to think about a couple of things. First of all, if I want to make improvements to my property, I work, I follow the law. If I want to make improvements to my property, I need, you know, a permit. I need to pay for those permits and inspections. Yet, if, if people are allowed to just stay without utility, without running water or electricity or anything else, what is, what is happening? Our groundwater is, is being affected. My neighbor in particular dumped antifreeze from old cars and oil, and they go to the bathroom outside. They've, they've dug a hole with a trench digger and, and that is right on my property. So I, I want to, to understand why you would enforce permits and, and those types of things. There's a reason for that, right? To make sure that, that all of our community resources are, remain safe. And if, if you allow that type of thing, then you'll have exactly what I have next door, which is a, a lot of people that are dealing drugs, doing drugs, that party all night, that tear other people's property up. I've had more accidents in front of my house than I can count. My mailbox knocked down by people, you know, spinning out of there all the time. It, it just creates a big problem. So I would, I would ask you to, to consider, you know, the, a balance there. I understand if someone is applying to, you know, they, they buy a piece of property, they want to build a house. They get utilities, they're making progress to do that, that's one thing. But just blanketly allowing what you're considering would, would create a situation where people are just camping out and, and my safety and my, you know, my family's protection should be, you know, considered. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other public comments at this time? Please go ahead and make yourself known. And just in, in case someone is failing to find the ability to raise the hand, if you want to put something in the chat or try to motion on your video, I will attempt to not miss anyone. Uh, Lorraine.
Um, can I ask Melissa if she lives on Riley Thompson Road?
Let me find her name and unmute her again. All right, go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, Lorraine, yes. Yes, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar.
Okay. This new board isn't aware of that situation and we'll discuss it.
Definitely.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Melissa, what's your last name?
Last name Smith.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. I do fail to mention that, to mention names so that Lori can get the minutes written down correctly. So I appreciate you pointing that out, Lori. Seeing no other public comment at this time, we're moving on to agenda, agenda items. And the first one being the replacement of the fire department HVAC system. And Chief Stiles, if you would like to talk about that for a moment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Back in early January, prior to that, we had discussed supervisor and the executive committee, and I had discussed some plans for putting some things into the budget for 2021, 22 fiscal year. And one of those things was our aging HVA system that we have here in the fire station. Unfortunately, it liked to go ahead of the schedule and one of our furnaces failed about two and a half weeks ago. We have two furnaces, one runs the front half of the building, one runs the second half of the building or the back half. Unfortunately, that back half furnace is not working. Obviously, we're in a cold spell, we're maintaining well, but I would really like to discuss the options of getting them repaired sooner than later. As I had planned to put them in the budget, I would use money in the next year's budget. We did look, myself and the clerk and the treasurer had gone through, and there is amicable funds that I can still use now to do this. I had gone out and received estimates prior to be able to then to build a quote. So I could go out for RFP when we went to, to make this a fiscal year purchase. But now that it's become court to court, in my opinion, an emergency, as it's negative degrees out. I have included three estimates to the, to the board in your packets. There are three different, you'll notice that two of them are pretty similar in price. The third one is a little higher. The reason that they were a little higher, if you look, the brand that they are supplying us with is a higher end brand furnace that, that I personally don't think we're paying, we're just paying for a name, in my personal opinion. The lowest bid is, is a reputable company, I've used them before. The only dilemma we have, and if those of you have never been in our firehouse, understand that both of our furnaces are up in the air, mounted on the ceiling out in an apparatus bay. To put those up, you need a man lift. Unfortunately, our man lift that the township owns is out of service and being alone out is actually not even ours. We're borrowing it from a business here in town and let us keep it and store it for him with our, be able to use for free. That company has the lowest bid, does not have a man lift, so we would have to rent a man lift. The middle bid, which is put out by Northside Heating, they do have a lift and would be able to use that, so would not incur any cost. Again, you have all three bids in front of you. You can make the decision which you would feel be the most appropriate. My only opinion is that it needs to happen sooner than later. Obviously, that we're still in very cold situations and I don't want to be freezing twice, if that's possible. That's all I have, unless anybody has a question for me.
I do. Is, I know, I'm sure that there's a lot of backup right now because of the weather and with COVID and everything that happened last year. Is there any of these, these three? Number one, that you would recommend? And number two, that are possibly going to be able to fix it sooner?
So I've talked to everybody and because we are a warming station for the county, we are a, which most of you probably don't know, we are an emergency shelter. We are also a active functioning fire department. We take precedence over anyone.
Yep.
I do not, this is a personal thing, I do not recommend anything. That is not my decision, that is yours as the board. I've seen all the, the companies used. I know that we here as a township have used Northside before. I have personally used Jewett. But again, I look at the long-term cost, obviously, looking at the bills and the, the bids themselves. Again, Jewett and Bishop, I would need to rent a man lift, which would cost for us. Where Northside has their own man lift and speaking with all of them, as soon as I called them to let them know who was awarded the bid, most of them, they told me they'd be out within the week. Once I would give them the information, it would take to order the parts, they could be out here as soon as next week.
It looks like the difference is about $2,500. How much does it cost to rent a lift?
That's gonna, it's gonna depend on how long they need it and what they have to tear down. Could be three or four days, could be a week, and most of those man lifts range probably. We rented one years ago when we painted the fire station on the outside, and that was about, about $1,200.
Okay.
For two days.
So these are all pretty equal when you consider that.
Right, yes. If you were to look at, again, renting the, the two of them, the third one from Bishop, which if you notice, does talk about replacing the air conditioning units. They won't do that right now, obviously, because they're buried under three feet of snow. But they will come out in the spring and do that, but that price will still hold. But if you look, Bishop, that, the 10,000 is just to replace the furnaces where the other two bids from Jewett and Northside include both the heating and air conditioning, which obviously are both 26 years old and probably should be replaced anyways. So if you look at the Bishop bill, it would be almost 17,000 versus 10,000 or 12,000 respectively.
And did you have a question as well?
I do, I do. Like BTU wise, one Jewett is 100,000 BTU and Northside is the 80,000 BTU. Can, do you know that if you, what, what is existing right now? Is that 100,000 BTU or 80,000?
It's actually a 94,000, which they don't make anymore.
So it just makes sense to go to the higher up one, just to keep you warm.
Well, i- if you look, they're actually the same, they're actually the exact same furnace. If you really truly look at them, it's, you have to remember it's a single stage and we have two of them. So it really isn't going to affect much in the, in the long run. Again, if you look at the, both of them are the aisle, they will, they will do the same thing. Because you have to look at one, if you look, they're both the three ton. The minimum is the 80, they max at 100. A Jewett wrote theirs to save 100 high end and, and Northside wrote theirs at the low end, which is 8,000. So they both will do the exact same thing, identical.
It also shows it has a blower, a blower motor on it too, the, the.
That's just, that's just how they word their bids, the exact same.
Trying to make it look better, okay, I got you.
Correct.
Gotta watch these heating and cooling people. Okay.
Tiny detail too, there, um, it looks like the estimate for Northside is only good for 30 days and it was given on the 14th of December.
But I've talked with them, we're still good.
Okay. Catch.
Good, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the estimate from Northside Heating and Cooling to replace the fire department HVAC system.
I second that.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes, Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passed. Next item is the sports and sports, sports in shorts presentation by Bob. Is that you HS Bob? Are you, are you the correct Bob? All right. In a, in a in-person meeting, this would be very easy to figure out, but let me unmute you here. And should be able to confirm you're being unmuted. All right.
Hi, everyone. I sent a kind of a sports in shorts details to Jeffrey. Did he hear that with most of you?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, basically, that's the, the rundown of the program after how much more you want me to explain. We've done this program in the past at Twin Lake Park. I think probably most of you are familiar with. And the chief is because he has come out and done a a fire department presentation and while the kids were in changing of the, the gear and everything too. But if you have questions, I'm ready to answer them. Or if you want me to give you a rundown of it based off that detailed sheet that I sent you.
Do we have any questions?
That I.
30 kids that go to it.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Your sound is breaking up a little bit, but the question was, how do you choose the children that attend the program?
I'm not sure what this happened.
Yeah, there's a, it's an unfortunate connection issue, obviously. Can you hear us?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
How do you choose the children that are accepted to the program?
They have to live in the township in order to go to your program. So we put the, the sign up link online and the parents, we I can hear you. Only children from Dalton Township can come to the program at your park. And we put the link online and the parents sign their kids up through that. We promoted it to the schools and through the early childhood programs in your neighborhoods.
All right. Do we have any other questions?
Did any of that come through?
A lot of it.
Is there a website that we can go to so that we can look into this a little bit more? Cause 3,000 seems like a lot for me, but again, I'm new to this, so I've never seen the program or anything about it, so it's very new.
Let me try to turn my video. Does this help with the sound?
It's still not coming in great.
All right.
But is there a place that people can go for more information on the program?
There is no, excuse me, there is no website specifically for sports in shorts. If you log on to W A C dot com.
I'm not getting that.
Hey Bob, I'll help you out, Bob, if, if I might, Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you go to the, the, what's called the, the White Lake Community Area Community Education website, which is, which is W A C E dot com.
Details that I say, you can go to W A C dot com and see how to sign up for the program. But because it's not active yet for signup, I don't make it active until June 1st for each part. You'll be able to see exactly what it's saying to you essentially.
Mr. Supervisor, did I help at all? What I gave was, was W A C E dot com. It's White Lake Area Community Education. You're there and it will have a section about sports and shorts, what Bob's talking about. That allows them to see that we've done this program now for as long as I've been here. I mean, we, we go out every year, we personally, but they have a, about a, about a two, almost a month that they're out at, at Twin Lake Park. They have all different kinds of activities, they do all kinds of the water safety stuff, they do other home safety things, not just safety itself, but it brings all the kids together. So I'm not trying to sway you on what you want to do, but that gives you the information if you'd like to go look it up. You can go to the White Lake Area Community Education website.
Anyone hear me at all?
We can, but it's very, very. We can, but it's very, very digitized, so it's really hard to understand.
Yeah, it is, uh, it's quite broken up, but I know there's a program that's been going on for a long time. I'm not sure exactly how long, uh, in Twin Lake. So it's a, so it's a common thing to do. Uh, this starts in July, uh, through August and I mean, do we have a motion now or is it one of those things that people may want to look into more and we could postpone for one month?
I want to make a motion, go ahead and approve the expenditure.
I support.
Any discussion?
I actually would like to look into it more. Um, I saw Tony had wrote up there that it's an eight week program. But yet it stays July fifth to August fifth. That's not eight weeks. That's July fifth to August fifth. And we're looking at three hours in only four days a week and thirty children. I really would like to delve into it a little bit more. I want to really see if that's a value. I just, I just want to look into a little bit more. And if it's going to be July and August, I think we have time to look into it.
Yeah, fair enough. So we're going to follow up with the motion that is on the floor. Um, any other discussion before we roll call vote? Motion, did you have a discussion item Gerald?
I was just gonna support, uh, Lori. I say we just continue doing it. Uh, we've been doing it for years and years. Might as well just keep doing it.
All right. Well, so we had a motion by Carrie for approval, a second by Lori. Um, so we will roll call vote that at this time.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Renee, did you say yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. And thank you for the presentation, Bob, even though it was, uh, it was rough, but we we were able to hear enough. Um, so thank you for attending the meeting and giving us that information and providing the information through emails as well. Next, we have the salary for the supervisor. And which these next few items are salary information and currently they're all proposed as staying the same as they are. Um, supervisor just happens to be first.
It's only five.
Now we have some sort of feedback. I I thought I turned Bob's sound off. But do we have a motion on the supervisor salary? All right, we have Nola motion to accept. Do we have a second?
I second.
Gerald's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lauren, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the salary for the clerk. And we have a motion on the salary. Carrie makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Gerald seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yeah.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the salary for the treasurer.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Renee. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have salary for trustees. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Gerald's motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
I believe it was Lori with the supports. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, all salaries stay the same. Next, on our poverty exemption forms for tax exemptions, we previously made our own at a local level. They were obviously consistent across municipalities to a certain extent, but now the state has released their own. And just so that we affirm that we are going by the the state forms, I put those in here um, with a motion to accept these as now our poverty exemption forms for taxes.
Make motion to accept it.
No emotions. Do we have a second?
A second.
Renee's seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have just a discussion about setting up a working session to discuss the budgets. And obviously with, uh, with largely new board, we're on a learning curve for establishing the budget. So we'll need not time to talk it out. Uh, February twenty second at three P M has been proposed. Does that work for other people?
I second.
Yes, excellent. So we don't need a motion and support, uh, to establish this. We just are working out amongst ourselves if that time of work. And it looks like no one is opposed. So February twenty second at three P M, we will have a working session for the budget. Next, we have a slightly unusual situation. It used to be done that some municipalities, some townships would allow people to combine properties, but only for taxes, not actually for the land use. Just to make the paperwork simpler. And that is not actually a thing you can do when you combine properties. You either combine them or you do not. Uh, this person, uh, the housemen, they did combine their property, but just for those tax purposes. And now they're looking to build an individual lots, which if they were left uncombined, they would be able to. But because they're combined, the ordinances have changed to larger lot size for building. They need to divide those properties up again, but then they wouldn't be allowed to build at the time. We found in our own paperwork, in the township paperwork, that the permission was granted for combining these for tax purposes alone. And since it is the township's own note, it seems reasonable to me, uh, to work with them to try to resolve that situation. Uh, the only way to get that to go through now is to go through the zoning board of appeals, which obviously has the six hundred dollar fee. And the housemen are requesting that we waive that, uh, for their their property so that they can use their lots. They can divide them and build on them again.
I make a motion to waive the zoning board appeals application for the fee.
All right, motion by Carrie. Do we have a second? Nola's seconds. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noah?
Yeah.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. All right. And next, we have a release of liability, an amendment of judgment, amendment to the court judgment concerning the Hobby case. And in the packets, I have included both of these forms that I was able to work out. Uh, the lawyers have written them up and they have been signed. Uh, I wanted to bring them before the board in that in that position. But it is going to be a board decision on what we do on this exactly. So we can approve this release of liability, which is a concern various people have brought up and a court amendment, uh, if anyone wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the release of liability and amendment judgment concerning Ricky Hobby.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Nola's seconds. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori is a no. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the marijuana ordinance, which has been made up by the planning commission quite a long time ago, uh, late two thousand nineteen, I do believe. And it's been waiting, sitting for a decision to be made. We obviously had a working session, a lot of discussion over this situation. Uh, initially, I was going to adjust the ordinance to drop it from three on each of the business corridors to two. Um, but properly, it should be brought before the board as the planning commission recommended it. Uh, so that is what we are currently seeing is as the as the planning commission recommended it. But we could verbally make those types of adjustments if we would like to at this time when we make the motion.
I'll motion.
What is the motion?
Carrie?
I believe that was Gerald. Was that you Gerald?
Gerald, so you're making the motion to, um, approve the ordinance with the changes from three to two facilities on each corridor?
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got that correct.
Right, so three, so instead of three and one twenty and three and wait, oh, there's two on each. Is the motion that is made. Do we have a second? Lori supports. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Nola?
No.
Care, uh, Carrie?
No.
Renee?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Next, we have a minimum floor area for houses. And how this came about is that we had someone come into the township and they're looking at building a house with a garage on the ground floor that they would drive directly into with most of the living space above it. And there is a certain minimum floor area that you need on the ground floor to qualify. Now to get around that, you can build a berm partially around your house so that it's high enough that it is counted as a basement. Um, but essentially the way it is now, it eliminates the ability to build the first floor with a direct driving garage where you would then go up into the living spaces, like you see in a lot of townhouses and cities and that type of thing, which I think is worthy of consideration, uh, for use and, uh, other people might see problems with that. But I want to bring it before the board and see if it's something that we want the planning commission to review.
I motion it.
I'll second it.
All right, we have motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Gerald?
Yes.
Carrie?
Did you say Lee?
Carrie?
Oh, yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next item, there's been a lot of discussion about greenhouses in the area. And obviously, West Michigan is one of the most active places in the world for greenhouses. Um, last I heard, we were second to the Netherlands, depending on how you count the numbers. And they count currently as accessory buildings, depending on the square footage that it is covering, of course. This has been brought before the planning commission before, uh, for discussion and was set aside. So nothing had been done with it, but I think it is potentially worthy of review of the planning commission again, if anyone wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion for the planning mission for review.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I believe that was Lee on the second. Do we have any discussion?
Who waits?
No.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the trucking ordinance. Now, this is an ordinance that does not go through the planning commission. It goes directly through the board. And has has quite the history of how the trucking ordinance in Dalton has changed over the years. There are a bunch, a bunch of issues that have been brought to me about it. Uh, specifically that it's limited in such a way that sometimes the trucks have to go directly through the village if they're going north and that they have to go in these large roundabout ways. And those changes were made for a reason at certain times, but it seems like it might have grown to be overly restrictive at this point in time. And we can essentially put it into a state of review among ourselves, look into the issue further and see whether we should have a larger whitelist of roads that trucks are allowed to go down or if we should reduce it down to limited blacklist of some sort. But a a discussion that I think is worthy of of moving forward with.
I move to put the Dalton Trucking Ordinance into a state of review for revision.
Renee motions. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Carrie seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have a requested land sale along our property in Goose Egg Lake. And there are three parcels that have been put together here. These values that we have of one for forty thousand dollars, one for seven thousand dollars, another one for seven thousand dollars are the true cash value as estimated by the tax assessor. Um, which is why I put that number as the requested minimum bid can always be adjusted by the board when a motion is made.
I make the motion to approve the acceptance of sealed bids to sell the three parcels of land under consideration for a minimum of fifty four thousand dollars.
A motion by Lori. Do we have a second? Second by Carrie. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have hiring of maintenance, which obviously ramps up going into this part of the year. And depending on which projects we potentially move forward with will change how much we need here. So I wrote it in a relatively flexible way. Uh, we obviously want to make the process efficient, but we don't want to, uh, have to come before the board for each potential change. And the next item, when we get to the parks and recreation, it intersects with this a little bit, depending on how much activity maintenance will be doing. But nevertheless, we will need to hire some people for maintenance going into, uh, the summer season. So do we have a motion for that?
I moved a lot of hiring about the five part time, full time and or seasonal maintenance personnel as needed and at the discretion of two thirds executive committee.
Support.
We have a support by Lori. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the Parks and Recreation Committee and or Advisory Council, depending on what we would like to call it. And this is to inquire into the forming of one. Obviously, we don't want to be forming committees just because, just for people to do things. Um, but this could definitely partially take a load off of the maintenance department. And we do have some some major areas. We have Beagle Sports Park, uh, which is obviously a a large thing, the horse trail, which a lot of people already volunteer at and help take care of. The previous board did purchase five thousand dollars of disc golf equipment and we can do something with that, of course. And so the potential of having an organization that's put together and is able to organize volunteering activities, I think, is definitely something to consider. If anyone wants to make a motion for that.
Can I ask two questions first?
Yeah.
First, is this a paid or an unpaid position? And two, do we have anyone being considered for this already?
Hmm, good question. So it's it's pretty flexible. I do not have anyone in particular being considered. How I think it would probably work decently well is to have one of our people from the board, one of the trustees, sit on this board as well or this committee. Um, just like we do with the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals as a liaison. And then there are very sports teams that work at like Beagle's Sports Park. And there are people that are heavily involved in the horse trail and hopefully there's someone that wants to be heavily involved in the disc golf. And these people that are already doing a lot of the activities there would be useful, I think, to sit on a committee or a council like that to advise on what we need to move forward with, and especially because hopefully they would be the people doing a lot of the organizing of various volunteer activities. So no one exactly in particular, but I I would think that is the makeup. So no one exactly in particular, but I I would think that is the makeup and a lot of other places use a makeup, something like that where it succeeds.
I love it. I move for the township to inquire into potentially establishing a Parks and Recreation Committee or Advisory Council.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carrie seconds. And any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the resolution for recording, recording and posting of public meetings. Technically, we we can do that with just the approval of the executive committee or or two, two parts of the executive committee. But it's something I want to bring before the board, obviously something that I wanted to do. And the way we've written up the resolution, the way I wrote up the resolution here is to also help legally protect us because there's a difference between providing a public service of allowing people to see the meetings at other times versus a legal record. And the legal record is kept by Lori, the township clerk officially. And that's why it's included in the resolution like that, but obviously something that I've wanted to do. And I do have a YouTube setup that I got certified and verified for the township and posted the last working session on there. I just wanted to bring this before the board so that we could have an official resolution on record if anyone wants to make that motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh eight for recording and posting public board meetings.
And do we have a second?
I'll support.
Lee supports. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. The next three items are separate but related. So the next one is a resolution for the rezoning and bidding of property that the township owns at twenty-nine hundred Whitehall Road, formerly known as Wayside, which used to be a trailer park. And this currently is zoned R two, which zoning for a trailer park would be RM in Dalton Township. And also, this resolution includes a PUD or PUT or Planned Unit Development in case one, someone wanted to do a mixed use in it of sorts. If someone wants to make the motion for this resolution.
I move to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Is that eight or six? Sorry?
Zero six.
I support.
For the re-zoning of the bidding of twenty-nine hundred Whitehall Road.
All right, motion by Nola.
Was that you, Lee? Did you support that?
I did. Gerald. Support by Gerald.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And next, dealing with the same piece of property at twenty-nine hundred Whitehall Road. The reason there isn't a trailer park there now is that sewer was put in. There was a large sewer assessment. And the township has owned that piece of property. Took a few years for the county to take it back and then transferred over to the township. But the township has owned it since two thousand and fourteen. So the township is currently paying on the sewer assessment, but collecting nothing on the sewer assessment. And since a lot is owned, which is significantly above the value of the property itself, that we would contingent upon a property sale, we would then write off that amount. And this, well, it gets a little more complicated in that payments were also not made in two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen when they were scaled. So it's definitely a a large problem that's been, that's been coming towards us and needs to be handled in some way. And the sooner the better. What I do not see included in this paperwork or in the motion itself is making a minimum bid on here. And we could also verbally include that there would be a minimum bid on the property. I talked to the tax assessor and on the high side for this property, the property may be worth a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I think a hundred thousand dollars would be a reasonable minimum bid to put in there. If someone wanted to include that in their motion.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven approving Dalton Township to assume the twenty-nine hundred Whitehall Road sewer assessment parcel. Number zero seven dash zero three one dash two hundred dash zero zero one nine dash zero zero contingent on property sale of one hundred thousand dollars or more.
And do I have a second?
Support.
Nola supports. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And our last item on the agenda has to do with R two zoning. So as as I showed in our packet, there's various permitted land uses, which R two is primarily for single-family dwellings or duplexes of family childcare homes or adult daycare homes. Then there are various special land uses which are more diverse. But there are some obvious things missing that could be included in the Dalton Township zoning ordinances for special uses such as senior centers or assisted living, multifamily housing units and this type of thing. And I think it would be reasonable for the planning commission to review adding those to the special land uses. If anyone wants to make a motion.
The planning commission hold a hearing in their February meeting to add special land use, land uses to the R two zoning.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Excellent. And that takes us through all of our agenda items. So now we will move into our second public comment section. And as the meeting's been occurring, I see the the chat features being, has been being used. Not, which is not an official way of addressing the board. I know it's unusual online. So if you want to make a public comment, please use that hand feature. We have one now. Or help signal to me in some way if someone is missing that hand feature, if they're not able to use it, I will read through the chats just in case someone wants to speak on the public comment. But first of all, we are going to have Kim in just a minute as I unmute you. And if you could state your name, so Lori can put it in the minutes for us.
Yes, Kim's here. I am your current Muskegon County Commissioner for the east side of US thirty-one in Dalton Township. So I just kind of wanted to introduce myself. Most you know who I am. But and I'm going to send my information, I guess, to Lori, my contact information. So if any of you have any questions, concerns or comments, anything that I can help you with, please feel free to to contact me. And that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to the meeting. Other public comments. I'm not seeing any of the little blue hands raised. I'm going to read through what was occurring in the chat for just a moment, just in case someone is missing their hand feature. I don't want to miss a public comment.
Hey Jeff?
Doesn't look like it. Yes.
If I may, if you could unmute Sarah Boyd, she's here to join us and educate us a little bit on the marijuana.
I can do that. Just a moment. All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Boyd, as we stated earlier. Thank you for allowing me to speak and bring some education to your township hall meeting today.
A little bit, Sarah?
I'm sorry?
Can you speak up a little bit? You're hard to hear.
Oh, yes, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Little bit.
All right, I'll try to use my military voice. All right, so thank you for allowing me to speak, as I stated earlier. And it sounds like you're allowing to have at least two facilities in certain areas of your township. Is that correct?
There will be, so the way it was passed, there would be two allowed on the commercial corridor of one twenty and two allowed on the commercial corridor of Whitehall Road.
Okay, so I just wanted to, as I stated earlier, brought some education to some of you on your township hall email. And I addressed a few things to importance of why the need would be to have more instead of less. I understand that you're a small community and that you're surrounded by larger communities that have more dispensaries. But the thing is, when you have more of supply and more demand, it draws down the price of the cost overall for the patients and anyone that wants to purchase product. So I don't know who was involved in the distribution of the emails that I sent. But whoever didn't get the information can be sent at a later time so that you can have that education piece to further make that decision. But my main points I wanted to state was, I've lived in several different places as a cannabis patient. And I've been a cannabis patient since two thousand eight. So I've seen what other states have done. And I've witnessed firsthand the cost involved with having more dispensaries. And as I stated earlier, a small community surrounded by a community that has dispensaries. So why would you want to bring more to your community? Well, not only for your own town people, so they wouldn't have to commute. That's one reason. As you can see, it's quite a blizzard tundra out there. So you wouldn't have to travel as far for one. For two, as you can see from the email I've sent, it has a huge difference in the price, the cost of the consumer. So as I stated earlier, I lived in Washington State. And I witnessed firsthand in December of two thousand, or excuse me, it was August of two thousand nineteen, the difference in the cost of the product. There was three dispensaries, just like you're stating. Instead of having three, you wanted to have two. There was three dispensaries, two right next to each other and one across the street within the zoning of Washington State in this community. And as a result, it drove down the price so significantly. It was about a seventy-five percent decrease in the cost of the dispensary here in Michigan. And I understand that Michigan is a relatively new state, and so the prices are going to take some time to reflect that. But as I stated earlier, more is better for the consumer. Also, the more dispensaries you have, the more the demand is going to be for growers. So those large grow facilities are going to bring in more people or place, excuse me, more employers, places for people to work. So not just the dispensaries for places for people to work, but also the facilities that process and grow and everything else that is involved in what the dispensaries are doing.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we do have two more people queued up for public comment. First is Rea. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hey guys, I'm Rea Flader. I'm a resident of Dalton Township. I have been since I was six years old. I have grown up in this community. I've watched it grow. I've watched it go through everything. One of the things I've noticed is a lot of businesses die tragically. One of the things we're asking for in this whole allowing cannabis into our community is allowing the ability for our community to grow. You go into the other townships and you talk to them. I actually contacted the treasurer and the clerk from Muskegon Township and asked them about their revenue and about their situations they have going on over there and how they're doing with everything. And they're still so very new to the whole thing. So they've only had businesses and dispensaries and such open for a year. But I want to educate you a little bit on the money, just for them to get licensing and such. It's ten thousand dollars a piece. That's money that comes to the township, guys. That's money that we need. On that, on top of that, also, they have to have building permits. And they have to have inspections. Those cost money and that goes right to us township people. And those inspections are every year. That permit, that licensing, that's every year. So to be clear, that's ten thousand plus dollars a year that comes back to the community. So I want to voice that, that I'm not just part of the side of the medical part of it and how much benefits there is for that. But I'm all about the the money that comes back into the community to help with our roads, to help with our drainage, to help with anything, the the sporting events for children, our schools. Those things are pretty important and those are things that that revenue can come back to help. And that will encourage more small businesses to open up in our community, showing that we are opening our doors. We are allowing you to come in. We want you. We want your revenue. We need you. We need small businesses. They're needed here badly. And let's open the door. I think four is absolutely reasonable for our small community. I really do. Four is perfect. It's just, it's just the right amount. And you know what? I don't want to drive way out to Holton to go to my locations or have to go away to North Muskegon. I shouldn't have to drive away and spend my money outside my township. I should be able to have the right to spend my money in my community, just like you guys get to. It's just a right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And I do have two more people queued up. I'm going to try to make sure that I allow everyone to enter in the order that they indicated that they wanted to speak. So next, we will have Rory. I'm asking you to unmute now.
Thanks for the opportunity here. First and foremost, I want to say, not an education, that was completely bogus. I've been in law enforcement for twenty years and I can tell you this firsthand, that every time I've dealt with marijuana, there's been guns, crime and problems. And that goes the same for alcohol. It goes the same for any type of narcotics, but they all go hand in hand. As far as money coming into the township, if you think ten thousand dollars is a lot, that's nothing. I mean, you invite any business in here and they're going to have to pay taxes, just the same as some stupid marijuana establishment. As far as going to get this stuff, there's already one right across from Myers, right in front of Yodel's where my, by the way, my kids go to Reese Puffer School. They all, they all go over to Yodel's. Now they got to look at a bunch of potheads. I believe that's one of the towns. There's one at Whitehall Road and River. So and you guys can grow this stuff in your own home. My kids don't want to see this stuff. I don't want my kids around it. I don't want it in our township. I'm here to fight this tooth and nail. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate the comment. And next, we have Brian. I'm asking you to unmute now.
Hey, I hope everybody can hear me. Want to officially say thank you to the new board members that ran and you guys were elected. Just want to thank you guys for going through the process of public scrutiny and going through the election process. I greatly appreciate the fact that you're willing to do that. I also want to say, over the last few months, what a breath of fresh air this has been to see the way that you guys have handled all of these various problems that have come up and issues that have come up. It's been really great to see this. Great to see how you guys respond to a little bit of pressure. So I I hope I don't put too much pressure on you, but I would also like to echo what Rory said about the marijuana. When we look at other states that have gone this route of legalizing, bringing it in, you see an increase in traffic fatalities. You see an increase in mental disorders in the community. You see an increase of other substance abuse. You see all these on the rise increase. And then the biggest part for me is, as far as I know, this is still illegal on a federal level, correct?
Correct.
So this is an illegal substance that a federal jurisdiction can come in and arrest people in our township. So how is that not aiding and abetting criminal activity by our township if we approve this? I think that you guys really need to take a look at the legal aspects of this. If you approve this and you go along with what is what is considered an illegal substance and is illegal on a federal level. That's, that's all I want to say. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
Excellent. Appreciate it. And Lori is indicating to me that if you could state your name, we'd appreciate it.
Brian Bockham.
Thank you much, just for the the record of the meeting. And do we have any other public comment? I do see that Rory has indicated that he would like to speak again, which I'm going to allow. But if anyone would like to indicate with the hand raised for public comments. All right, go ahead.
Thanks for the additional. Uh, thanks for the additional time here. Um, basically I just want to, uh, expand on what Brian said. This is still listed as a schedule one narcotic at a federal level. It is illegal for doctors to prescribe this stuff. Does it have medical purposes? Maybe. I don't know. I've never tried it. I don't smoke the crap. But as Brian just said, it is illegal and you, 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 you open yourself to the ramifications of what could happen. The clientele that comes in there, they're not always peaches and cream. And, uh, I don't want this around our, our area. And I just, like I said before, I'm, I'm going to restate it. I'm going to fight this tooth and nail with everything that I have. I've done it for twenty years and I don't plan on stopping now.
All right. And do we have any other public comments? I'm, uh, Sarah, she's, you're actually waving at the, at.
I don't know what this hand raising is. I apologize.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
My name is Sarah Boyd. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Sheriff, thank you for your service to the community. I appreciate your time and I appreciate the, the other comments. But as a cannabis patient, I assure you that, um, there are already people purchasing in the black market in your community. Sheriff, I'm sure you're probably very aware that about the dare program and how the war on drugs is kind of losing the battle here, sir. And the information that I've sent to the town hall individuals has proven that when cannabis dispensaries, legal dispensaries are placed into a township area, it increases the value in the homes. So with that aspect, with that information, if it increases the values of the homes and how can there be crime and things of that nature that you were stating that these legal dispensaries are going to bring into the town? Also, um, I lost what I was going to say, but I apologize. I just want to say that this, this is a good thing for the community. It really is. And I understand that your fears, but there's education out there. As you stated earlier, those, those states that have already had this legal for a long time, we aren't seeing the crimes that you're stating. If you are seeing the crimes that you're staying with this legal cannabis dispensaries, we wouldn't see the increase in home values. I assure you that this is a good thing for your community. Look at the other states and communities that are already doing it. And yes, it is a schedule one drug as a result of the uneducated dare program and other individuals that have placed this reefer madness out there to the world.
Thank you.
To re-educate so that you can change, not just this township, not just this nation, but the world. We could be trading cannabis across country borders. And Sheriff, I understand your fears are for your children. I have children as well. I have grandchildren. I have those same fears. I want it out of the black market. That's where the fear is, sir. And I assure you, it isn't cannabis in the black market where our fears are. It is heroin. It is, uh, it is meth. It is all of those drugs that those hard drugs, the schedule one drugs that are on the black market. Sir, not the dispensaries that we should fear for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. I do want everyone to be able to say what they want. Although, uh, I don't want the repetitions to get too much and that we're carrying out to conversation purely through comment, public comment between the public. But Rory, I am going to, uh, let you, let you speak again. Uh, I appreciate you keeping the comments short, um, so far. So go ahead and I'm unmeeting you now.
Uh, thanks. I'll keep this brief here. Um, I don't know where we're getting this type of information, if it's, uh, some type of Scooby Doo van or what. But I can assure you, um, it's not the case. Their era problems definitely associated directly to all narcotics, including cannabis, marijuana, whatever you want to pet name, you want to call it. But here's an idea. I understand that, uh, our state passed this for whatever mental reasons they have. Why don't you put a huge charity bond on these places, say two hundred fifty thousand dollars, let's, and, and have them hold it in an account? And, uh, let's make them accountable. Something happens, these legal proceedings that happen, uh, at least you guys have something to fall back on. Let's not just jump right at this. Um, let's use our heads about this and go forward as a township in a smart way. Instead of just going forward because people want you to go forward, I guess. Uh, that's all I have. I'm sorry. I won't waste any more of your time.
All right. It's true that people are, I probably shouldn't have allowed anyone to speak a second time because obviously this is, uh, this is occurring quite a bit. So now what we have is I do, since I have allowed it, um, we have Rea and Brian, uh, both queued up. So we'll hear these comments, but after that, um, it will be anyone that wants to speak for the first time on their public comment, uh, before we end the meeting. So first of all is Rea and you're unmuted now.
Hi guys. Um, it's Rea. Um, so I believe that the township already voted on this, correct? That they were wanting it into the community. Um, and it was a majority vote as far as I understood. So the people already spoke and already said they wanted this into the community. So as far as it putting restrictions on a business, uh, if we're going to put restrictions on a business like that, I mean, are we going to put restrictions on the bars? Are we going to put restrictions on a grocery store? Cause they get robbed, you know, there's crime there. How about gas stations? We get people kidnapped from gas stations. So if we're going to start putting restrictions on businesses, it's kind of asinine as far as I'm concerned. It's a business allowed to come in. The people have already spoke. They want it here. This, this whole thing is just gotten out of hand and ridiculous. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Brian, if you would like to comment? No? All right. All right. Is the, are there any other public comments? Not seeing any. Is there any board comments before we wrap up the meeting here?
Yeah, I've got a comment. You know, I just want it on record. It's already on record that I voted no for this. And my biggest reason is you look at Oregon, the state of Oregon. They have now legalized crystal meth, heroin and cocaine, all because marijuana was the gateway. It opened the door for this furtherance of corruption. And it's like, so each township gets to say not close to schools, but over across from Reese Puffer, basically there's a dispensary over there. So, yeah, that was kind of, I didn't realize that. But anyway, that's pretty much all I need to say about it. Um, the people voted for it. I see this, Shriya, I get that. And I have a voice too, okay? Just because people vote for it doesn't make it that it's a good thing. That's all. I'm there.
Thank you. Any other board comment?
I just want to be on the record of saying no also. We represent the people and I understand that there might have been a majority, but the people that we have talked to ourselves in the community that have wanted us to vote no. They stated that they had a hard, they didn't realize when they were voting that it was turned. If you voted no, you were saying yes. If you were saying, if you voted yes, you were saying no. And so there was some confusion with that. That being said, it's done. It's over. I believe as a board, we've already voted. I just want to make sure that I'm on record to say no.
Yep.
Any other board comments? All right. Hearing none. This was a very big meeting. There were a lot of items on the agenda, a number of controversial ones. So I appreciate everyone's patience as we move through it and everyone cooperated well and we took care of a lot of business. The chat feature did get used more than it should since it's not an official way to comment to the township. I've previously been leaving it open in these online meetings, just in case someone wasn't able to figure out how to use the hand raise function. But in the future I'll have to turn off the public commenting through the chat. Otherwise, I appreciate everyone talking that, that spoke at the meeting, everyone coming and attending. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion to adjourn, please.
Do we have a second?
I support.
I believe that was Lee supporting. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.